... Yeah, we hit some. Okay. I see him. He's like, "Get him out of my way." Once. I mean, for all the weather reasons. So. I'm sure he's got it. 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 I appreciate being here. I'll say hi again. I'm honored to be here. Yeah. I'm honored. 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 I appreciate being here. I'm honored. 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 Hi. Steven Stark. I'm a Steve. Yeah, that's right. We came to our rotary club. You're a rotary club member. Once they start yelling and... I must get another one. See if I can get away with that. I'm afraid so. Hi. I'm the girls. Hit the crack. Hey. How you doing? Hey. How you doing? Sit down there outside. Oh. Okay. Oh. Oh, yeah. I just hope to get you your confirmation. And so I'm gonna get... Wait here. We're gonna back to you. So you're... I'm gonna... I'm gonna... I'm gonna... I'm gonna... I'm gonna... I'm gonna... Hey. How you doing? Hey. How you doing? Sit down there outside. Oh. Okay. Oh. Oh, yeah. I'm off now. I just hope to get you your confirmation. And so I'm gonna get... Wait here. We're gonna back to you. So you're... I'm gonna... 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 Yes, 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 yes. You know that... She's better. I think I love you. I thought you were talking about the mayor and the sheriff. The sheriff doing house out. I'm sure. I have a question. What is it? So... Yeah. Yes, ma'am. 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 Yes, ma'am.
Thank you all for coming. Before we begin our meeting tonight, we'll have a prayer by Councilman Mark Schreiber, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our Father, we come before you as your children. We ask for your guidance. We seek your protection. We pray for your forgiveness for what we have done and what we have failed to do. Father, through you, may we as individuals and as one undivided nation give guidance, offer protection, and be forgiven. Father, you are the way, the truth, and the life. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Welcome. I will now call to order the Monday, September 18th, 2017 City Council member or City Council meeting. Mrs. Powell, roll call, please.
Fitzwater.
Here.
Graham.
Here.
Henry.
Here.
Hesse.
Here.
Kemna.
Here.
Mahalovich.
Here.
Prather.
Here.
Schreiber.
Here.
Ward.
Here.
Wiseman.
Item three, adoption of agenda. Councilman Hesse.
I move for adoption of the agenda with two amendments. At four E, adding a POW presentation, and for F, a presentation by Susan Cook Williams.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item four, miscellaneous agenda items. And at this time, we usually recognize our outstanding employee of the month for September. This month, it is Mr. Troy Shulte, and he could not be at this meeting, so we'll recognize him in the future. Congratulations to Troy. Item B, we have a proclamation for the diaper need awareness week, and we have some that are with us this evening. If you'd like to come up to the podium and tell us a little bit about the diaper need in our community, and we have a proclamation, so I'll start by reading our proclamation this evening. Whereas diaper need, the condition of not having a sufficient supply of clean diapers to ensure that infants and toddlers are clean, healthy, and dry, can adversely affect the health and welfare of infants, toddlers, and their families. And whereas national surveys report that one in three mothers experience diaper need at some time while their children are less than three years of age, and 48% of families delay changing a diaper to extend their supply, and whereas the average infant or toddler requires an average of at least 50 diaper changes per week over three years, and whereas there are no government assistance programs for the purchase or provision of diapers, and a monthly supply of diapers can cost as much as 6% of a full-time, minimum-wage worker's salary, therefore obtaining a sufficient supply of diapers can cause economic hardship to families. And whereas a supply of diapers is generally an eligibility requirement for infants and toddlers to participate in childcare programs and quality early childhood education programs, and whereas the people of Jefferson City recognize that addressing diaper need can lead to economic opportunity for the state's low-income families and can lead to improved health for families and their communities. Whereas Jefferson City is proud to be home to various community organizations that recognize the importance of diapers in helping provide economic stability for families and distribute diapers to poor families through various channels, therefore I declare the week of September 25th through October 1st, 2017, as diaper need awareness week, and we encourage citizens to donate generously to diaper banks, diaper drives, and those organizations that distribute diapers to families in need to help alleviate the diaper need in Jefferson City. So who would have thought that we would be talking about diapers tonight, but clearly it is something that is very important need in our community? So welcome if you four would like to introduce yourselves and tell us your roles here.
My name is Katie Epama. I am the president of the Capital City Diaper Bank Board. I'm also the Parents as Teachers Coordinator for our school district here in Jefferson City Public Schools. And for the past several years, we've had so many families who have a hard time affording diapers for their children, and unfortunately, our city does not have a lot of resources. There are some that provide diapers, but not a sufficient supply. So for the last two years, my church, First Presbyterian, has hosted a Pictures with Santa diaper drive, and over the last two years, we've distributed over 15,000 diapers to needy families here in our school district. Recognizing that is not enough to alleviate the problem, we're currently working on forming our own 501(c)(3). We are incorporated as the Capital City Diaper Bank to work on the issue of diaper need right here in Missouri.
Cynthia Quetch, board member.
Chris Moore, board member.
Hi. Leslie Kern, Secretary of the Capital City Diaper Bank and also Executive Director of the Pregnancy Help Center.
Great. We're glad to have all of you here, and as a lot of you know, Cynthia is also our Director of the Housing Authority that we work very closely with, so glad to have all four of you here. And I know you do the diaper drive with Santa, but what other ways can people help now?
Sure. As I mentioned, we're working on becoming our own 501(c)(3) organization, but we're always happy to receive financial donations. We can provide tax break for that as we are working through another agency for that. Also happy to provide and accept donations of diapers and wipes that we can distribute directly to families in need. This year, and with diaper need awareness week, we're really just trying to raise awareness. I think a lot of people don't even think about diaper need being an issue. I know I certainly didn't, as much as I grumbled about buying diapers for our kiddos. So even just taking that information that you heard, that one in three families nationwide report that it's a problem, and that the families who do report diaper need as an issue report they need about 11 diapers per week to have a sufficient supply, just sharing that information with others to kind of let them know that that is an issue, and it is an issue that we see here in our community.
Well, we'll help you and do our part to raise awareness, and if you'd like to come forward, we'll get a picture with the proclamation, and as we share it, you can share some links about how people in the community can help. Oh, yeah. That'd be great. Okay. Okay. Thank you. Item C, we have recognition of Historic City of Jefferson for $20,000 contribution to the city's Down Payment Assistance Program. So we have representatives from Historic City of Jefferson if they would like to come forward to the podium, and so we can formally and officially thank you for that. As many of you know, the city has, through their Old Town Corporation Group, we have a Down Payment Assistance Program, which has been very successful over the years, and this is just fantastic that we have Historic City of Jefferson Foundation contributing to this. It will make a visible impact in the community. So welcome if you'd like to tell us a little bit about that.
Thank you to the City Council for and the city for recognizing this donation that the Historic City of Jefferson through the Historic through the HCG Foundation is making toward this program. The Historic City of Jefferson is very excited to be able to provide financial assistance this year for the city's residential down payment incentive program, as I said, through the HCG Foundation. The preservation of historic buildings is one of our strongest objectives. Participating in this program coincides with our mission, which includes contributing to the community in a way that preserves our historic places so that these buildings will remain may remain in our future. We applaud the city for continuing to offer and to fund these programs, and we hope that the amount of assistance available will increase each year. Renovating older homes, especially those that have fallen into tough times or have been used for something other than a single-family dwelling, not only brings back that property, but can be instrumental in revitalizing a whole neighborhood. Such revitalization also encourages more owner-occupied dwellings, raises assessed values, and can boost tourism and relocation. And there are environmental benefits as well by reusing structures that already exist, many built with loving craftsmanship and the use of quality materials that may not exist today. Programs such as this may also take someone from a rental situation to becoming a first-time home buyer. The city of Historic City of Jefferson again thanks you for continuing to offer these programs, and my name is Tammy Beschen, the President of the Historic City of Jefferson. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, the significance of this presentation to me is the fact that the funds that are being used are donated by residents of this community to assist other residents who are picking and selecting this city as their home, and are willing to consider an older home with our help and enjoy it for themselves and their families. It's so significant because I don't believe there's ever been a private institution that lent itself to this principle of sharing within the community. And the city council should be recognized for permitting us to do this for the community. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you, Mr. Monaco and Mrs. Beschen. We're very thankful to Historic City of Jefferson for this contribution. $20,000 is a very significant contribution. I know you all work very hard to raise that money, and there are a lot of things you can do with it, but this is really going to make an impact on our community. It will help these homeowners that are trying to renovate and make a difference, and it's a proven program that is very highly successful, and there are many, many examples over the years of seeing this Down Payment Assistance Program that work. So we sincerely thank you on behalf of the city council. Appreciate what you do. On Sunday was the Historic City of Jefferson Homes Tour. It's an annual event. I think it was the 12th or 13th year you've done that, and I was able to get to some of the stops. I know that the small admission charge that you charge raises money for things like this, so I hope the community understands that they can attend your events that you hold throughout the year, your ice cream socials and your home tours, or they can become a member of Historic City of Jefferson. And if they really want to step it up, like a few of us have, they can become a member of the Thomas Lawson Price Society. I believe it's only, what is it, $1,000?
$1,000.
And that's that can be paid over installments.
Yes.
And you can become a member of this group. And so there's a lot of ways you can get involved. Of course, named for the first mayor of Jefferson City, Thomas Lawson Price.
Madam, we have other special guests here this evening. Steve Iley, who's been a Trojan horse in making this work. Steve Stark, who did the legal work and who helped us throughout the entire process. And the young lady who received the grant was so tickled and so pleased that she is in Jefferson City and that we're here to help. Thank you.
Well, you're welcome. And why don't we have your other representatives from Historic City of Jefferson come forward so we can get a picture, and you can share it on your website. We also have Councilwoman Laura Ward, who is a board member or former board member, former board member and was on the Homes Tour yesterday, a fantastic home, by the way. Do we have any other board members or HCG members? Why don't we come forward and we'll get a picture?
Anybody else who's associated?
Anyone else in the audience who's part of HCG and Laura and anyone else?
Me.
Oh, yeah. I'll have you take it again here. Okay, thanks.
Come on up.
With the bling phone.
These are the people that really do the work. I think we go over there. Come on up, man. Where do you want us to be?
You need a bigger pot?
I know.
And I'm gonna do two rows, so some of y'all get in the back there. Right here. Yeah. I don't know. Problem.
That's that bling bling phone.
Okay, that's us. Really friendly. Okay, look here. We're ready.
We did have a selfie request, so we'll get it. Okay, one, two, three. Two. Okay. Thank you all very much. Thank you so much.
Give her a selfie.
Thank you. Your... Okay. Yes. Yes. All right.
Item D, we have accepting proclamation from Eastside Business Association in appreciation of the city's support of the eclipse event. So we have several members with us tonight from the Eastside Association. So if y'all would like to all come forward, welcome.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. City Councilman, I'm Donna Dietz, and Secretary of the Eastside Business Association. You guys introduce yourselves.
Hank Straub, Vice President.
Holly Stitt, I was in charge of the total eclipse of the park.
Dave Fordner, volunteer.
And as y'all know, August 20th and 21st was kind of a big weekend for the city of Jefferson. I mean, we planned this eclipse so hard. Yeah, really worked on it hard. We're requesting another one in a couple of years. Anyway, to that extent, we did have a very successful event in Riverside Park, and a lot of it was due to the efforts of both our police department, the members of the city council, city staff, but especially the Parks and Recreation Board. And to that end, we've developed a resolution on behalf of the Eastside Business Association, if I may read it to you. Whereas August 20th and 21st, 2017, was designated as a total eclipse of the park celebration for the Eastside Business Association. Whereas the event was held in Ellis Porter Riverside Park in the historic east side of Jefferson City. Whereas the Eastside Business Association provided special events, including musical entertainment, art, food, movies, and family-based activities during the weekend. Whereas the Jefferson City Parks Recreation and Forestry Department aided the association in the endeavor by reopening the Riverside entrance to the park with property clearance and new pavement. Whereas the Jefferson City Parks Recreation and Forestry Department provided new wayfinding signage for the direction into the park from McCarty Street, even providing temporary signage in lieu of new permanent signs when gas lines were compromised. Whereas the Jefferson City Parks Recreation and Forestry Department serviced the pavilion to provide enough electrical services to handle food vendors' needs. Whereas Jefferson City Parks Recreation and Forestry Department provided direct involvement in planning committees and direct implementation of the plans during the event weekend. Whereas the Jefferson City Parks Recreation and Forestry Department personnel spent numerous hours preparing the landscape, keeping the property clean, and assisted in logistics before, during, and following events. Whereas specific Jefferson City Parks Recreation and Forestry Department staff, Phil Stiles, Josh Wardenhauser, Amy Schroeder, J.J. Gates, and Todd Spalding went far beyond the call of duty to make sure that the event was successful. Therefore, be it resolved that the Eastside Business Association commend these leaders of the Jefferson City Parks Recreation and Forestry Department and their employees for the enthusiastic and professional support of this event and the Jefferson City community. Presented by Greg Kemna, President of the Association, September 18th, 2017. Again, we want to thank Todd, wherever you are. Get up here. And present this resolution to him on behalf of his department and the staff.
Thank you, Donna, and members of the Eastside Association for recognizing the city. I know the event that you all took on for the eclipse at Riverside Park was a big one. It was well attended. I heard wonderful comments about it. I believe Councilman Hesse was there that day and maybe Kemna both days. I think, yeah, most of the council attended, and I heard wonderful comments from both council and from the public. Does anyone have anything to add? I do think we should get a picture of... And Holly, did you have something?
Yeah. I just want to say, because I was the one who coordinated the whole total eclipse of the park over there, which was an interesting endeavor in itself, but it would not have happened without the way the city worked together on everything. And it wasn't just Parks and Rec went above, Parks, Rec, and Forestry went above and beyond making it happen, but it was everyone from the city involved. Steve getting random phone calls in the middle of the days of freaking-outness. And, you know, the JCPD has been fabulous to work with. The fire department brought out stuff and was there on hand to make sure people were safe. So if it wasn't for everybody working together, I don't think we would have pulled it off successfully as we did, so thank you.
Well, you are so welcome, and thanks for the proclamation.
safe. So if it wasn't for everybody working together, I don't think we would have pulled it off successfully as we did. So, thank you.
Well, you are so welcome, and thanks for the proclamation. And if you all would like to come up here, we'll get a picture. And if council wants to come behind, and maybe Chief, Fire Chief, and Police Chief too, and Todd stay up here, so have Parks and Police and Fire in the picture as well, and you can share it with Eastside. So if council wants to get here, Donna and I brought... We'll get for the photo. And Rick, Rick, come up here in the front, because we have the eclipse glasses, so...
I have it on selfie mode.
There. Okay, thanks.
What's Wednesday?
I think I have camp on Wednesday.
Your granddaddy.
Yeah. I already gave him a hug, so maybe he'd give me a little bit nicer look.
Your great-great-granddaddy. Right.
All right. Now, everybody.
Pat McCutcheon, you want to come on up? Come on up, Pat.
Come on up. Make fun of you, too.
Can't see it?
Yeah, Steve. But Mayor, get a selfie with Steve in it, please.
I think Steve needs to be in it.
Steve has to be in it.
Yeah. Up front.
There you go. Take a selfie with your glasses on.
Get Steve in front.
Is Steve in there?
Right in front.
Smile, Steve.
Smile, Steve.
Smile, Steve.
Yeah, I think I'm winning that. Yeah, right. For the next eclipse, I'm ahead of you. Okay, now, Item E. We have POW MIA recognition. We have Mr. Don Hinches, and Mr. Phil Kaliff, and Mr. Jeremy Amick. If you all three would like to come forward, and also, yeah, you should come forward, too, because you have a lot to do with the veterans, so come on up. Now, this is something that's very important for our city. On Friday night, there was a very nice event and ceremony at the Capitol, the POW MIA recognition, and they presented us with this proclamation. So actually, Jeremy, did you want to read the proclamation to us? You all presented it to us, I guess.
You think my eyes are that good, huh?
Okay, or I can read it, too, if you'd like. Thank you. It's an honor to receive this.
Whereas the City of Jefferson and the state of Missouri remains resolute that no American serviceman or servicewoman who can be recovered shall be knowingly left behind on the field of battle. And whereas the City of Jefferson holds with highest regards the sacrifices made by all American prisoners of war who surrendered their freedom and endured great hardships in defense of the American liberties and values. Whereas, on the date of this proclamation, the number of American missing in action from all U.S. wars stands at 82,491. And whereas, the people of the City of Jefferson hold dear the sacrifice of all American servicemen and women who have given their lives with specific attention by this proclamation to those whose whereabouts still remain unknown. And whereas, the City of Jefferson recognizes the POW MIA flag designed by Newt Heasley in 1972 as a symbol of our nation's concern and commitment to resolving as fully as possible the fates of Americans still prisoner, missing, and unaccounted-for from all U.S. wars, thus ending the uncertainty for their families and the nation by finally providing closure. And whereas, the homes and businesses of the City of Jefferson are encouraged to display the POW MIA flag, when practical and appropriate, in conjunction with the Flag of the United States. And whereas, the citizens of the City of Jefferson with somber appreciation extend their gratitude to all POW MIA family members who continue to carry the burden of their personal loss and offer encouragements that the fate and location of their missing loved ones will be made known again. Now, therefore, by majority consent, the Jefferson Barracks POW MIA Museum Board of Directors does hereby proclaim the City of Jefferson as a POW MIA city.
Thank you very much for that recognition. That is quite an honor, and we will display the proclamation here at City Hall so that citizens can enjoy that, and we will be sure to uphold the duties of being a POW MIA city. And we appreciate the proclamation and the honor, and the sign as well, that we will have proudly here in Jefferson City. And I don't know if there's anything else that any of you would like to share?
The signs will be posted on all major highways coming to the city, on the road sides from 50, 54, 63. There'll be five signs. This is one of the signs that we got now. The other four are in production, and they'll be here, so we get them posted at city entrances, so the public knows when they come to the city that Jeff City has been honored to be a POW MIA city. Thank you, folks.
Well, thank you to all of you for your service to our country and for working on the POW MIA. I know, Mr. Amick, you helped to get some of the organization together to do it, and with all the veterans groups. I know, Dawn, you're in charge of some of the veterans groups here as well, and appreciate that. Well, thank you. And we'd like to, of course, get a picture. Does council have anything to add? And appreciate that very much, and for all of our veterans and what you do. So if you'd like to all come forward, and if council all wants to get in this one, too.
I don't know if you are aware, but there are two that I know of, former POWs from World War II, that live in Jefferson City, Ralph Cabralow and Wilbur Rowden.
Thank you for recognizing them, and they were at the ceremony as well, which is really nice to have them there. All right, well, do you want another picture, council?
I want your brother. I want your brother. I can't remember why.
No, it changes. It's kind of odd.
Oh, yeah.
All right, ready?
Face that only your mother could love.
All right.
Face that only your mother could love.
I can tell.
I don't know if she wants to sign it or not.
When she gets a break.
And Item F. We have Mrs. Susan Cook here to give us a report on Cole County Youth Day. Welcome, Susan.
So with all these proclamations, I feel like I should start with "whereas." Most of you know me from Habitat for Humanity. I am here tonight, like she said, on Cole County Youth Day, and many of you have helped with that event. So first, I want to talk to you about Jake. Jake is a 12-year-old boy who lives in our community, but if you ask him, he's already 13, just give or take a few months. Jake was born here in Jefferson City, and he goes to one of our public schools. He's a relatively shy boy, but he's very well-spoken. When he grows up, he either wants to be a policeman or a paleontologist. Jake is a fairly good student, but his grades have been slipping the last few years, and he says that is due to the fact that he gets picked on a lot at school lately. And although the schools are doing some really great things with anti-bullying, he hasn't found that one person at school that he feels safe talking to. He's tried a couple of the teachers, and he didn't feel like they did very much, so he kind of decided just to keep it to himself. The other problem is that some of the kids that bully him are also living in his neighborhood. So he rides the school bus to and from school with these same kids. His home life is okay, he says, but his parents both work, and sometimes shift work, so he doesn't see them a lot. And there are some drug and alcohol issues within his home. He does have two older brothers at home, and he tried talking to one of them about being bullied, and one of his older brothers basically just said, "Stop acting like a girl and man up." So he's really left on his own to figure out how to deal with things. His parents don't have a lot of money or time, so he's not involved in a lot of extracurricular activities. He used to go to the park a lot down the street from him, but the bullies have kind of taken over that area as well. So now he spends a lot of time in his room, thinking about what he's going to do when he graduates, and unfortunately, when he leaves Jefferson City. So Cole County Youth Day was designed for kids like Jake. Seth Baumann and I were sitting around one day, talking about the fact that we always ask adults, "What's going on in our community? What can we do better? What's going on in our nation? What do we want to see improved?" But very rarely do we stop and collectively ask our youth, "What are the issues that you're dealing with?" Because as we all know, the issues that we're dealing with as adults, jobs, economy, crime, aren't necessarily the issues that our youth are dealing with. So we designed Cole County Youth Day to have three goals. First, we wanted kids like Jake to have a voice in our community, and we wanted them to be part of the solution. Two, we wanted to introduce them to positive role models within our community: firemen, policemen, city council members, local judges. We've had many different groups participate in the day. And third, we wanted to give the parents an opportunity to see all the different resources within our community, in case they needed help or if their child needed help. And when we presented this idea to the community two years ago, the community rallied behind us, so we went forward. The first step that we did is we did a pre-survey with our youth through the schools and through Boys and Girls Club. And we asked the youth, "What are the top five issues that you're dealing with right now?" And both years, it varied just very slightly, but this year, the top five issues for our youth were bullying, alcohol and drugs, violence, feeling as though they aren't treated fairly, and not enough activities in our community for their age group. So then, the day of the event, we bring the students in at Lincoln University. We break them into groups of about 10, and we have Lincoln students take them into these issue rooms, where they're talking about these issues separately, one for each room. And we had community leaders facilitating those discussions. We had the Council for Drug for Youth. We had Judge Cotton Walker. We had a therapist from RACs, Councilman Henry, and Chris Sutton from the Boys and Girls Club, the Parks and Rec Department. They facilitated, though. They listened, and they let the youth talk about the problems, and they let the youth talk about solutions. After they went through these rooms, they went down to Jason Jim, where they had the opportunity to interact with those community role models: the Sheriff's Department, JCPD, the Fire Department, council members. We just had different fun activities for them to do. All this time, the parents are going through the resource booths, learning about the different resources in our community. We fed them lunch, and we raffled off prizes, which doesn't hurt to raffle off an Xbox to get people there. And the feedback that we've gotten from the youth has been really great. At first, when they went through the rooms, it was kind of like, "Oh, I don't really know what's going on." But once they went through one, they were like, "Wow, you really want to hear what I have to say? You're interested in my opinion?" And they really kind of opened up and gave us some great ideas. We're going to start meeting soon to start planning the third annual Cole County Youth Day, and we'll probably hold it again in April. But at this point, I urge all of you, as our city leaders, to really stop and ask yourself if we are doing enough in this community for kids like Jake. Do we make them feel welcome in our community? Are there things for them to do that are fun and free? And what can we do better? I've spoken with both the schools, the Jeff City Public Schools, as well as the JCPD, and we're talking to them about some of the specific things that the students brought up. But ultimately, these are the kids that are either going to run our city, or they're going to run from our city. So I urge all of you to get involved with Cole County Youth Day.
Thank you, Mrs. Cook, for that report and for your work on Cole County Youth Day. And please, keep us posted on your future events. If community leaders want to get involved and help kind of get involved with your cause or for the next Youth Day, how can they reach you to get involved with that?
You can always reach me at the River City Habitat for Humanity office. That'd probably be the easiest way.
Great. I know we have some council members that have been very actively involved as well. Do they have anything to add to the report? Larry, Councilman Henry?
And actually, I just wanted to commend Susan on her work. She wears a lot of hats around here in the community, this being one of those hats with Cole County Youth Day. So thank you, Susan, for everything that you do. Thank you for allowing, at least for myself, to be a part of these things. And I think Cole County Youth Day is extremely important, now more than ever, especially in lieu of some recent events that's happened over at the high school as well. So thank you for what you do, and continue to do that, and I'm all here for it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, thank you very much, and anything we can do, I think, like you said, we need to all be role models and try to help the youth in any way we can. So thank you for being here tonight, and if you want to come forward, we'll get a picture. And I think some of the council members that have been actively involved in Youth Day, if they want to come around, too, and the rest of you can get on back here, too, and we'll get a photograph, and let's share what you're doing for youth. Oh, yeah. Thank you.
Everybody see the time?
No, you're good. You're good. Another eclipse.
He did it like once.
Hold Carlos up, Larry. Hold him up.
Ready? Ready?
Yes.
Okay.
Yay!
Bling, bling!
All right. Item five, public hearings. There are none this evening. Item six, appointments by the mayor to boards and commissions. And we have Board of Adjustment, Stacy Young, Brad Schaefer, and Robert Gammon; Cultural Arts Commission, Holly Stitt; and Library Board of Directors, Ruth Canada Painter. And is there a motion to approve?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. And I do want to thank Mrs. Stitt, who is here in the audience tonight, that was here as part of the Eastside Association, and thank you for serving on cultural arts. Are there any other pointees here this evening? Great, thank you. Item seven, presentations from staff, consultants, and invited guests. Item A, we have Mrs. Jane Beadham, Jenny Smith, and Kathy Boardner to give us an update on East McCarty and School Street. So you are welcome to come forward. Welcome.
Thank you. I'll be the only one speaking today, so...
Okay, welcome, Mrs. Boardner.
And do I understand I have... What is the time limit?
Five minutes.
Okay, very good. Since we last talked to you, we have tried to make some progress on this issue. We've run into some stumbling blocks, and in spite of working pretty hard on it, we just haven't made the kind of progress we wanted to. So we wanted to ask if you would either extend the suspension of demolitions in this neighborhood or even consider putting a hold on them without a deadline date, so that we wouldn't have to keep coming back every 90 days. But the update that I have is, it would take more than five minutes to go over everything, so what I'm going to do is I am going to leave two handouts with Mrs. Powell, and she can make copies for the council members, because there's a lot of really good information in these handouts that would help you understand the background of the situation we're facing. But what we have done is that we have worked on establishing a local historic district. There's no form available for that, and we asked city staff to help us with that. Eric Baron, we contacted him on July 25th, and he said he would have it within a few days. We did get guidelines, design guidelines drafted by August 1st. A meeting was finally set up with city staff on August 28th, and that included Eric, Jamie Abbott, Sonny Sanders, Ryan Mullman, Matt Morash, and there were... Oh, Don Fontana was also there. City staff discouraged us from using a local historic district. They don't believe that this is going to accomplish what we want. We don't agree with that, and we are trying to reach out to our SEMA representative to get this clarified, but we have not heard back from her. We think she may be working on the flood assistance in other states, so we think that's probably why we haven't heard from her. But another issue is that 75% of the owners would have to agree to the district. We asked the city staff, who, on the part of the five properties owned by either the city or the Parks Board, would sign off on that on behalf of those properties? And we asked for a written confirmation of who would be doing that, and we have not received that. The city attorney felt that FEMA would not accept a local historic designation for this purpose. We are trying to get clarification of that, and we respect his opinion, but we believe that we should be able to talk to someone from SEMA to further clarify that. City staff explained why. They feel there's no option but demolition of 408 Lafayette. That property was initially purchased for rehab. They used HUD money for that, and if they sell the property without rehabbing it, the grant must be repaid. The grant cannot be repaid with federal funds, and the proceeds from the sale of the Marshall Street House, which was also purchased with HUD money, is still considered federal funds. Those profits can be used for demolition. Department of Economic Development, who administers those grants, wants to close out that program by March of 2018. And so I think that city staff are... And I could be wrong. I could be reading something into their comments, but I think they're trying to bring closure to this issue, so that that program can be, you know, can be terminated. I'd like to talk a little bit about the risk of flooding. There has not been flooding in this area since the Corps of Engineers did their project in the 1960s. At the August 28th meeting, Mr. Morash provided a map that showed the city's property at 408 Lafayette has a main elevation above the base flood elevation of 570 feet, which means a letter of map amendment can be requested from FEMA, so that the flood insurance would not be required. Such action would allow the city to proceed with their original intent, which was to rehabilitate the house for resale as affordable housing, rather than the current plan, which is demolition. And another thing is that Brad Bates, the chairman of the Parks Commission, has stated that he thinks that it would be a good thing for them to meet with the neighborhood, but that's, again, one of those things that we have not been able to bring about, probably because of schedules. I think my time is probably up, and so what I would like to do is leave a copy of the information, more than what I just read. There's additional information there, and also, an update... At the August 28th meeting, Mr. Morash provided a map that showed the city's property at 408 Lafayette has a main elevation above the base flood elevation of 570 feet, which means a letter of map amendment can be requested from FEMA so that the flood insurance would not be required. Such action would allow the city to proceed with their original intent, which was to rehabilitate the house for resale as affordable housing rather than the current plan, which is demolition. And another thing is that Brad Bates, the chairman of the Parks Commission, has stated that he thinks that it would be a good thing for them to meet with the neighborhood, but that's, again, one of those things that we have not been able to bring about, probably because of schedules. I think my time is probably up, and so what I would like to do is leave a copy of the information, more than what I just read. There's additional information there, and also an update of the whole process that we've been going through for some time. You asked at one meeting for background information, I think it was Councilman McAuliffe, you were struggling with all of the different aspects of this, and this document kind of gives a synopsis of that, so...
Thank you, Mrs. Bordner. And do we have any questions of Mrs. Bordner? Mr. Henry? Councilman Henry?
Thank you, Kathy, for being here and the work you and everyone else does in regard to working with, trying to work with these properties. I guess, and I don't even know if it's a question more than a comment or what, but I'm really concerned that these, I mean, these properties are in designated, as in what we consider a designated flood zone, flood plain. And considering, and I guess, and even though, and I hear you about these, nothing down here has flooded since, I guess, the 1960s, as you mentioned, you never know when that's going to happen again. And so that becomes my concern, because then, when these properties, when that does, if and when that does happen, then for whatever reason, it comes back towards the city, people come back towards the city with these particular issues, property owners do, even when it's their property. So I guess my question to you is, is anyone that's willing to take these over, are they willing to take that type of a risk?
Well, I'm thrilled that you asked that question, because what happened is that most of these people bought their properties before they were designated in the flood plain. FEMA changed the maps after they purchased them. And another thing that has happened is that this has happened all over the country, where areas that are, where there's historic properties, people originally built long waterways, and things were done to mitigate that, like in this case, you have the cement ditch. And so those properties haven't flooded, and there's a good chance that they might, you never know. But all over the country, FEMA changed the flood maps and impacted historic neighborhoods, and other communities have found ways to address this problem without raising the neighborhoods. And that is something that we would like to have city staff do some research into, what other communities have done. At the meeting, they said that they weren't willing to do that, that they felt we needed to do that research, which I think it's something that would help people all over the city with all the problems that we're facing with stormwater and things like that. And so, you know, you're right, that at any time, this can be different, and they can be flooded. Properties that never flooded are facing that problem now. People change, you know, things change, somebody does a development. But it seems unfair to force a neighborhood where they bought their houses before they were designated in the flood plain, and they're basically being forced to abandon their neighborhood because of something that FEMA did. And this is, again, this is happening all over the country. So I hope that answers your question a little bit.
My question, well, my other parts of that was, are some of these property owners willing to take that risk if it so happens that these properties happen to stay? Are they willing to take that risk of flooding, those sorts of things, knowing that the city's not going to have any sort of liability towards that?
You know, I can't answer that for them, but I would suspect that they probably would. You know, they know that, I think anybody in Jefferson City who's not on a hill knows the risks they face, and we don't, well, you know, we don't, yeah. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And Mr. Sanders is going to give us an update from staff as well, so I wonder if this would be a good time to have you give your update, and then if there's any further questions. Actually, Councilwoman Ward, please.
Hi, Kathy. Thanks for presenting to us. I have a question regarding the work you've done on the historic district. How many properties are you looking at in that area? And I understand that you need 75% of property owners to agree to the guidelines that it sounds like you've already established. Based on the number of homes that you are looking at for that area, would the five be needed in order to meet that 75%? You know, since that seems to be maybe a hangup in your process here?
Yes. I think they would be. I believe that there's, I could be wrong, but I think there's 25 properties, or 24 or 25, and five of them are owned by the city or the Parks Board. So if the city, you know, if it was, you know, up to, I don't know who signs off on that, but, you know, then, and they didn't agree to allow the designation, then I think it would pose a pretty big barrier, if I do my math correctly.
So if you can get everybody else, you would have 80. You know, if those are the numbers we're looking at.
Yeah.
Because I know I worked through the same process and had to get 70%, because we did a conservation district. But I understand the obstacles and all the work that's involved, so I appreciate you taking that on. And if you need any help with anything, I'm just happy to help.
I think you will be contacted, I'm pretty sure.
Well, I mean, I have a little bit of experience with it, so I'd be happy to help in any way.
Very good. Thank you.
Any further questions? Councilman McAuliffe?
I think this area has kind of came to us in a kind of surprise and has exposed us to several issues that we, it's new to us on the council, and it's also things that as a staff and a council, we need to address. First of all, as citizens, when you come into our city and you're purchasing property, we need to be sure, and I think they are available, our maps and zoning and all that, because I know of two instances where people were unaware, and buyer beware, that we had plans in place, and they were in designated flood zones. We had one guy called me, he was worried he had sewer line running under his house, which is very easily identifiable, stormwater, rather, if he'd looked at his property. But now he's faced with having to do that on his own, because the city will not accept that under the current condition. So buyer beware and understand, I think to the best extent, our comprehensive plans and our planning documents. The second thing that that brought forth is that we have a planning document that's really too old. I mean, it should be updated, and I don't default anybody on not having updated, but there's a lot of changes in the city, and we have our focus, and I think the council made a decision, and a supportive decision, to add a new planner, city planner. We know that comprehensive plans need to be updated. We know that certain areas like this one, the 2005, '06, let's see, it's adopted in 2004, '05, something. And you, were you not a part of that original planning group?
I was a part of it, yeah.
So you proved, you're in a best position to us to get, in a way, to say, a concerted public effort was undertaken for that area of the city to look at it and say what its best use was, as you saw it in 2004, '05. Well, clearly, and it did anticipate some of these changes, we've had three major events that have changed the nature of that plan potentially, and that area specifically. Lafayette, even the transformations plan that was conducted by the chamber, although it fell on its face to the voters, it did have plans for links and ties between Lincoln and downtown in ways that the plan might have not have anticipated. So our staff is obligated to follow what us as the council decide is the best, is the direction we give them. And I don't default, I don't fault the staff in any manner with regard to this plan and following it as per previous councils where approved. In my chair, where I'm at, is I think that our best approach is to revise the comprehensive plan, have a public effort. And through a public effort, we revise the comprehensive plan or revise that area, then our staff have a clear direction from us and from the citizens. So that is, I don't know how, you have a significant planning group kind of got together, we met a few times, but we've kind of, I think, deserve to put this through a public process to revise our plan as appropriate. Now...
Yeah, I agree. I think you should change the plan. And one thing I would like to point out, you know, I was on the committee that helped design that plan, and I don't even remember discussing this neighborhood, although I'm sure they did. Nobody expected this neighborhood to ever turn around. If you remember 10 years ago, it looked much worse. And now that I look at that map of that neighborhood plan and that green area, I realize that if you will see very light lines there, which indicates that currently there are buildings there. And so what we did as a committee is we said that this area that had all these homes on it should be cleared. And I don't think that there's any other green space on that map where that's the case. And if I had known then what I know now, I would never have agreed to clear off and make green space out of an area that had so many homes on it. So I don't, I don't think that we focused on this area. I believe that we focused on more the areas closer to MSP. I think that that was our main goal.
And I might, you know, recognize the efforts of our planning staff who put a lot of effort in to look at overlay districts, both on High Street and Capitol Avenue, and ultimately ended up revising the plan for Capitol Avenue. And recently, our planning zoning just adopted the comprehensive amendment for Southside. So, you know, there's a lot of planning work to be done, and that would be, that would be my direction. I mean...
I think it's a very good idea to revise that plan and get public input and see what the community as a whole envisions for that area.
Thank you. Any further questions for Mrs. Bordner? All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Let me go ahead and give...
And Mr. Sanders, do you want to give us an update as well? And I know there's some information you can provide as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I do not have a prepared statement, but I certainly can talk about some of the items that was just addressed. First, I'd like to clarify, with the historic district designated by the Historic Preservation Commission and approved by the council here, that will not get around any flood plain regulations. It is tied specifically to each individual structure. Our city councillor has researched that and can verify that. I don't know if there's anything he wants to add to that, but that's basically it. The structure itself has to be declared historic. The Historic Preservation Commission and the council does have that authority to do that, to alleviate some of the flood plain regulations, and Mr. Morash can go into detail about which ones those are. I'd also like to note that the flood plain map change in 2012 was really minor. The flood plain maps going back to 1980s showed most of that area in the flood plain. Actually, a Corps of Engineers document in 1969 showed all of that area in a flood plain, and they did some nice, neat pictures showing, you know, how high the flood would get and things like that. That was in response to, I think, a 1946 flood where water did go over Elm and Dunkland Streets. So the area has, I don't know the extent of the flooding, but it did go over the streets. So they have been in a flood plain in maps produced by the federal government available for quite a while. The 2012 change was not major. The property 408 specifically was purchased with federal money for $54,000. Approximately $23,000, $24,000 more dollars were put into it for a roof. The idea was to spend more federal HUD money to get that house up so that it could be used for low to moderate income renters. At the time, that house was declared dangerous. The repairs were estimated to be between $54,000 and $80,000 some odd thousand, not accounting lead abatement issues. So if the house was not declared historic, although it's in a flood plain, we can't spend any more federal money on that, no matter if you get a letter of map amendment, I believe that's correct, with the federal government...
Elevation certificate.
Elevation certificate. So we have a lot of funds in that, and it is true, we are going to have to pay those back at some point. We can't go forward with doing anything with federal funds in that house. So there's going to be a point where we're going to be stuck with owing $80,000 back to the NSP program. So that is one concern we have about that specific house. Certainly, if the Historic Preservation Commission and the council certainly wants to look into creating a historic district, looking at identifying individual houses, going through the comp plan process, we will support those efforts wholly. But we do not believe it is a best planning practice to redevelop in a flood plain. We're seeing, there's hundreds and thousands of people talking, well, we weren't even in a flood plain, and we're flooded now with all the events going on on the coast and even here in Jeff City with stormwater and things like that. So with that, I'd be glad to answer any specific questions regarding any of the comments, or Mr. Morash or Mr. Mulman may have some input also.
Mr. Councilman Prather has a question first.
Do we risk losing money if we don't act by a certain date in December as far as either demolishing that house or selling it?
My understanding, the HUD money, we were told earlier this year that we need to return it by the end of this calendar year. March is a few months later. But at one point or another, if we don't get that money to pay back, we're going to have to pay it back unless we do something with it. If we demolish it, we don't have to pay that back. At this time, the proceeds from, I believe it's 304 Marshall, we asked permission to use those to demolish three properties in that area. Certainly, we can just demolish one, and that would absolve us of any sort of $80,000 liability on that piece of property. If that property remains there, no matter what we do with it, we're not going to be able to spend more federal money on it to make it livable. We can certainly sell it. We could sell it at a loss and have to make up that money and return it, or we can just demolish it and kind of wash our hands from it.
Further questions? It seems like there's a lot of moving parts in this, between not only your department, Mr. Sanders, but also we have the Parks Department, we have some timeline obligations, we have the federal money, we have the FEMA issues. There are many, many things, and you've given a few suggestions this evening by saying, you know, if council wants to pursue looking at this or the comprehensive plan or different things. But how is a good way for us to really get that plan to move forward and get all these moving parts coordinated together between the neighbors and the neighborhood, you know, balancing the historic preservation possibilities with what's happening in the neighborhood? And how do we, how do we best proceed?
I would think first, we would need to take a look at the short term and what's going on with 408 Lafayette. What do we want to do with that? And certainly with the additional planner, we are going to be looking at different aspects of the comprehensive plan. If the desire is to take a look at flood plains first, we certainly can do that. There are a lot of moving parts. There's a lot of different aspects to comprehensive planning. We are going through the whole process of, well, tonight, we're going to be talking about a Historic Preservation Plan grant that we're applying for. So that way, we might get some expert opinions on how do we address historic preservation, even in a flood plain. So there's all sorts of things that we can kind of simultaneously move forward on. I do not have a concerted plan in my mind right now of how to do it, but we're communicating, we're expressing all these concerns about what is going on down there, and we are certainly looking forward to tackle the situation.
Well, we know there are deadlines approaching, and we don't want to jeopardize any future opportunities of the city to have flood insurance or those kind of things that could come out of it. So I know we also want to work with, of course, working with the neighbors and the neighborhood is important as well, so balancing all of that. So hopefully you can work with Mr. Kroll and other city staff members to help guide us through that process. Councilman Prather?
I'm a little torn. I hate to be seen as kicking the can down the road, and we're eventually going to have to demolish, or we would be in jeopardy of not being able to demolish it because we lose the funds. But at the same time, I appreciate the efforts of Mrs. Smith, Mrs. Beadham, and Mrs. Bordner are putting into this, and others. And I think it'd be appropriate to give them another 60 days to work some things out and then come back to us again and then make a final decision on it. So I would move that we would grant them another 60 days.
So there's a motion. In a second, any further discussion? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Okay, so hopefully staff then will be able to, during that time, get a plan moving forward. Item eight, announcements by mayor, council, and staff. And Councilman Graham, I'll start with your announcement.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I guess this is to our city attorney. I know at our last council meeting...
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Okay. So hopefully, staff then will be able to, during that time, get a plan moving forward. Item eight, announcements by mayor, council, and staff. And Councilman Graham, I'll start with your announcement.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I guess this is to our city attorney. I know at our last council meeting, as a sponsor of the South Side Plan, I moved to put that on the, to postpone indefinitely. And since then, I've been asked a lot of questions. So I would say if you can give us an update of where we're at with the South Side Plan.
Certainly. Thank you. So I have looked into city code and state law regarding the procedures for adopting comprehensive plans. And what I have found is that city code has some inconsistencies with state law. State law provides that the P&amp;Z Commission is the decision-making body on approvals of comprehensive plans and amendments to comprehensive plans. And city council, or sorry, the city code has some further direction that goes above what is contemplated by state law, by state law, and provides a mechanism for city council to review and approve comprehensive plan amendments. And so this inconsistency is what I was concerned about at the last meeting and what I like to address. I distributed a memo to the council, which was also distributed to the public via the media on this issue. And so I have a recommendation that the city council first amend its city code to reflect the procedures that are set forth in the state law to reduce the amount of uncertainty and inconsistency with state law. Essentially, state law governs this area of law, and we need to have procedures that reflect the governing statutes. And then my second recommendation, specifically on the South Side Plan, is that it not return to the council in its current form for legislative action that's not contemplated by state law. And so as far as the status of the South Side Plan, South Side Plan having been approved and adopted by the P&amp;Z Commission is now a official, formal part of the city's comprehensive plan. So there, for purposes of state law, which is governing law, there is no further action needed on the South Side Plan. It's part of our comprehensive plan. The process is really done.
Councilman Graham?
Just a follow-up question. So what I'm hearing you say is that if a comprehensive plan comes before P&amp;Z and is approved or denied, that is the final stop? It doesn't come before city council?
That's, that's correct. For as far as legislative decision-making and official incorporation into the comprehensive plan, the P&amp;Z Commission is the decision-making body as provided under state law.
But only on the comprehensive plan?
Only on comprehensive plans. All other actions, for example subdivisions, rezoning, changes to the zoning code, the P&amp;Z is a recommending body with final approval by the city council. It's only in this limited area of comprehensive plans and amendments thereto that the P&amp;Z is the final decision-maker.
Councilman Hussey?
Do you have any concerns that even though it was not the procedure in line with the state, that we publicly advertised a public hearing with council approval? Any concerns that a member of the public or somebody may feel like, wow, P&amp;Z made a motion to adopt, that an opportunity was missed, and so maybe they didn't get a chance to have input or change the direction of it, thinking they still had another step in the process?
Sure. I could certainly see those concerns and valid concerns to think that, you know, there's, you know, three steps in the process and the city only went through two. That is, that is an optic that, that the city would have to overcome. But, but the, the P&amp;Z in approving the comprehensive plan gave full notice, full opportunity to participate at a public hearing as contemplated by state law. The, as far as state law is concerned, the procedure was completely carried out and gave ample opportunity for that procedure to, to allow public participation. So while I understand your concern, and it is a valid concern, there was opportunity to, to participate at the decision-making level in the public process.
Any further questions? Councilman Mahalovich?
Okay. I think there's really one important, I want to be sure that I understand this and anybody listening understand this. If I was to do something inconsistent with that comprehensive plan, I could not do that today without the correct zoning in place. And that would take a P&amp;Z recommendation in our vote. So in other words, the plan sits there in anticipation of underlying zoning, but that is not in place as it is, as, it's not there today.
If I, if I think I understand your question correctly, yes. Any, any changes that, that would have to occur to zoning to allow any type of development would have to come before this body for, for approval. That doesn't change. The comprehensive plans under state law are meant to, they're meant to be guiding documents and not, not regulatory documents. So that way, when you make decisions on zoning-type issues, you can look to that plan for guidance and say, "When the city took a look at this holistically, this was the opinion that this plan expresses." And so, so when making a decision, you can refer to that to justify any decision that you make. You essentially said, 20 years ago, we thought this is, this is what it should be like. Now we have a decision. Do we want to implement the plan or not? And the planning document also acts as guidance for city staff on presenting issues to the city council. You know, when decision points have to be make, have to be made by city staff, we look at that document and say, "These are the document," or "This is the decisions that have to be made based on what the comprehensive plan says." So it's, it's really a guidance document. It has no real regulatory role on saying, "You can do this. You can't do that. This has to be this way. This has to be that way." But it's, it's really, it's really just guidance.
Councilman Hussey?
One last question. In our history, do we have any instances that you're aware of where the council has made an amendment or change to that comprehensive plan after it being passed by the P&amp;Z?
I, I have, I, I've tried. The records are kind of hard to get through to find that. I haven't, I haven't found any situation where they have, but I can't say, I can't say we, I can't disavow that situation either.
It's finding a needle in a haystack probably, but I'm just curious if there's not some sort of major councilman that at the time maybe felt minor, but it could have been major to somebody, and this opens the door for them to come back at it.
Sure.
So anyway, I was just curious.
Mr. Mullman, we, oh, Councilman Graham?
So I have another question too, a concern rather. So if, for example, let's just say Lincoln University owns the radio station, and they decide to tear their radio station down because it's in dire repair, and they want to build across the street, what process would they have to go through to build it across the street?
Well, an institution like Lincoln University is unique because...
Not just using as an example. What about someone who owns a business? Because we've been contacted by two business owners in that area...
Right.
Who wants to move or expand their business. And right now, under this plan, is saying that that cannot happen.
So, so if there were a situation where someone wanted to, let's say, change it from, just hypothetically, residential to commercial, and the plan says this should continue to be residential, they can apply for a zoning change to make it commercial. City staff would include with any type of report, city plan, comprehensive plan says this should remain residential and would likely make a recommendation consistent with the plan. But ultimately, the decision to change from residential to commercial is a decision of the city council. So they can make their case and say, regardless of what the plan says, this is why we think there should be a zoning change from residential to commercial. And that would be up to the city council to decide, essentially unbound from the comp plan. It's, the comp plan is a guidance document. City council is the final decision-maker on zoning changes.
Well, I know we have two business owners who I guess will be approaching the city council with this issue. They approached us before, but I'm sure they're really going to approach us now in a concern about, about this.
Comprehensive plans, zoning should be consistent with comprehensive plans, but consistent does not mean in lockstep.
Mr. Mullman, thank you for that clarification and update. And there are really two things going on here. One is just the procedural aspect of it, which you are working on and coming to us with any kind of changes to our current code that would need to be made, just to make sure that we're all in compliance with our approvals and our process. So there's the process part. The other part is the South Side Plan that was previously talked about. So there are two separate discussions and issues. So just to clarify, because there was some confusion after the last meeting from some constituents that, that thought that the action by not voting was, was relative to the South Side Plan itself or the content of the plan. So to clarify, you're working on the procedural aspect. The approval's already been made. Planning and zoning's already voted. So the, the South Side Plan is already in place. Speaking of the South Side Plan itself, I did want to take a moment to recognize, Gaspard Calvaruso couldn't be here this evening, but I know he has worked very hard on it along with Cap Region Hospital, and other business partners have worked hard on, on getting the South Side Plan. They've had several public meetings and input throughout the community over about the last year or so. And so we appreciate when businesses and residents and public, members of the public want to come together and look at making an area of improvement, what they can do. So South Side Plan is really, like you said, Mr. Mullman, it's a guide. It's, it's a, it's a plan that would be used for a guide. So whenever these things may come up in the future, it is an unfunded plan. So, you know, certain things that may come forward in the plan are great ideas and concepts, but, you know, when we want to look at realistic improvements, it's more of a guide than, than something that is happening today. And when, as businesses come forward, certainly the council would work with them, to Councilman Graham's point. And, and also, Mr. Sanders, I don't know if you have any, any remarks on a couple of the next steps. It is unfunded, but as far as the plan to say to the public?
The plan, as Mr. Mullman said, has been approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission. No zoning in that area has changed either with that action. So everything is still zoned the same way it is. It is a guide. If someone wants to redevelop a piece of property, they would probably look at that guide and say, "Oh gee, my, my, my property now, this guide says I can do this with it. I'm going to go through the process to do that." So there is sort of a roadmap if someone does want to redevelopment, redevelop some of their property. They now have a stronger guide that's been approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission. So when they do come to the council saying, "I'd like to rezone my property to commercial from residential," they can point to that and say, "Here's the big picture. I'm just here first to help implement it." So that's basically all I'd like to say regarding that.
Thank you. And it gives some direction, which is good. And, and the good news is, in the South Side Plan, the direction is a positive one for redevelopment, for renovation, for how, how that can be improved. Councilman Mahalovich?
I just want to make one point. There's a few of us have served on the Planning and Zoning Commission. We took our work very seriously. And that, that, that is a higher bar to amend the comprehensive plan in my, when I sat on that commission. And Mr. Fitzwater as well, Councilman, because you felt like there's somebody that did the planning behind the scenes and it was adopted by a body. And so I just, I don't want to say as a, I don't want to poo-poo the importance of a comprehensive plan, because I, in fact, took it very seriously when, when we would ask for, the first thing we'd ask for is the amendment of the comprehensive plan, correct? And I took your all's recommendation, staff recommendation, the amendment of the comprehensive plan, testimony, and all those things into, into factor when we would, we'd be voting at that level, and still today at this level.
Thank you. Any further comments, questions?
Madam Mayor, may I?
Yes.
The plan is also, since it's a guide, it also assists with seeking grant funding. So for instance, if there's a MODOT grant coming up regarding trails or beautification, the plan shows that we've been through a public involvement process, so it may be connecting trails together, maybe a transit grant. It could even be a HUD or some other grant. So having the plan also helps support external funding sources. I just want to mention that, too.
Thank you for the update. All right. Any further comments? All right. Other announcements? I'll give my announcements, and I might have a few photos too, to share with some of my announcements this evening, maybe. But I'll start with talking about Lincoln University, because they had their first home football game of the season, which they won. And it was their first night game that had been done, I believe, since the 70s, maybe, on their brand-new field, which is just fantastic and beautiful. And they have lights on the field, so they were able to hold a night game. So go Blue Tigers. That was great. They had that. This weekend is Lincoln University's homecoming game, and they are playing versus Truman State. So I don't know if Graham and Hussey should be sitting next to each other there, but that'll be, that'll be a nice rivalry. Oh, and council and Wiseman. So that'll be a good, a good game this weekend. And a few other announcements. I did read in our News Tribune issue of Her magazine, who would have thought Larry Henry would be mentioned in Her magazine as a model coming up? So I heard you'll be doing some... Yeah, you've been hiding that from us. Your talent, and we did not know you were a model, Councilman Henry, on the side. So that event, I believe, is coming up maybe in October. I don't know the exact date.
[inaudible]
Okay. Okay. Well, feel free to, when it gets closer, let us know so that we can come and cheer you on in your modeling debut, so...
[inaudible]
Also, the East Side Association, or the, there was an East Side Block Party, and that was at, held at East School. And that was on Friday, and there were several council members in attendance. So appreciate the community and public schools and some of the church groups getting involved in that. Also, the Walk to End Alzheimer's was Sunday, and that was yesterday. We had a great turnout for that despite the rain. And the city did make a proclamation, proclaiming yesterday as a day to end Alzheimer's. Also, National Night Out was last week, and several neighborhoods last Thursday evening had block parties. I know several council members attended. I don't know if there's any, anything to report on any specific block parties, but it seemed like there was some good turnout in the neighborhoods. And also, I did the memorial stair climb on Sunday, September 10th. And that was a remembrance for 9/11. And that was the first time they'd done it here in Jefferson City, and the Missouri Department of Public Safety helped sponsor that. And that particular event, if you climb to the top of, here's, here's a picture here of it, climbing to the top of the Jefferson Building 10 times is what it would have been like to climb to the top of, of the World Trade Center. And so they tried to kind of replicate what that would have been like. And this picture that's on the screen is our own Councilman Kemna singing the National Anthem at that event. So who knew that, that Kemna has also been holding out a talent on us in singing the National Anthem? And then the next picture here shows Governor Eric Greitens in full-fire gear, and he led the way. And that was really a sign of very impressive leadership, leading by example and getting in there in full gear. And he did the entire 10 climbs to the top. So he did that. It was very impressive to see. And the next photograph just shows the firemen going in, all in their full gear with their air packs. I mean, some of them weigh 50, 60 pounds. And, and they were from all over the state. We had firefighters that came here to Jefferson City from all over. So on that particular event, it was very impressive, the amount of work that it takes to do that climb. I did the climb to the top seven times. Councilman Kemna did all 10. So that was impressive. Honestly, after the first two, I was done and I was leaving, and others encouraged me and said, "You should keep going." And it was really an event of encouragement. It was a day when people said, "You can do it. You can keep going." And, and I think that encouragement was, was very impressive. And, and really, since I did it in heels, I would say my seven is equal to your 10, Councilman Kemna. But I will say, though, seeing those firemen there in their full gear, I was most impressed. I will never forget seeing what it was like to see, "Exit sign is this way, but they're going the other way, and they're climbing, and they have their gear and, and their dedication and, and helping each other out, like, 'You can do it. You're almost there.'" It was, it was incredible, but also brings to mind why we did that, to honor those firefighters who died on September 11th. And Chief Schofield, we appreciate the firefighters and what they do every single day. So appreciate that. This event here was Tunnel to Towers, another remembrance for September 11th. This was held on Saturday. And that particular event was the Stephen Siller Foundation Supporting First Responders and Military Heroes. So I was lucky enough to get a photograph with our police officers. And then the next one here is the Mayor's Cup. And this particular event is held every year at Binder Lake. And the winner of the Mayor's Cup is Lesik, let me see here, Lesik Vincent won the Mayor's Cup. So here he is pictured there. And, and the other races that morning were won by Jim Crabtree, placed first in the Fly Scott Fleet. Paul Rutter was first in the JY-15 Fleet. And then Lesik Vincent was first in the Megabyte Fleet. Fleet. That's a handful there. But it was pretty impressive to see what we have at Binder Lake. If you don't know, Capital City Sailing Association does these events every year. And if you're interested, we had people from the lake and Columbia and other parts of the state that come here for that. And there might be one more picture of the sailboats there. I mean, what a beautiful sight on Binder Lake to see the boats. So very impressive what Parks and Rec has here for our community. My last announcement is So Long Summer Music Fest, which is coming up on Saturday, September 23rd. So mark your calendars. This event is a fundraiser for the Safety Net of Missouri, which provides financial support for our local law enforcement firefighter EMS and correction officer families during times of a line-of-duty death. This year's event features 80's Rock Legend's Night Ranger with opening act Poison Overdose, which is America's number-one poison tribute band. That is on Friday, September 22nd. On Saturday, September 23rd, we have country music superstar and actor Trace Atkins performing with our local country music superstars, Murphy's Ford, opening the show. So a lot of you are familiar with Trace Atkins. Who knows some Trace Atkins? A little honky-tonk...and I won't finish it.
And honky-tonk.
There you go. All right, Carlos. If you want to hear the rest?
[inaudible]
There you go. You want to hear the rest of that song? Not tonight. Somebody has a quarter over here. Okay. So that is at the Fairgrounds on Saturday, September 23rd. But I do want to also, I think it's great they're helping Safety Net, so I want to help Safety Net a little bit, too. I did buy my tickets. I hope you all do the same. Murphy's Ford is...those are our hometown boys. Those are our local band that is opening for Trace Atkins. How cool is that? So you might know their song, "Anyone But Me," that is a popular song. You hear it on the radio. Good for them. They're really making it, and that's very cool for Murphy's Ford in Jefferson City. So you may have heard the song where they talk about Big Horn Drive, you know, Jefferson City? And it says, "I can't stand the thought of you calling him baby. I don't know if that sounds crazy, yeah. I don't want you to be happy with anyone but me." Anybody else? Carlos?
Nope. Never heard that one.
Dave? Somebody?
[inaudible]
Okay. If I go on the road. Now, I expect you all to learn those lyrics by Saturday night, September 23rd, so y'all can sing along, so we can sing along to Murphy's Ford, okay? So Quinton Rice from Murphy's Ford, y'all can tell him. We gave him a shout-out. All of us, right, at City Hall tonight? Yeah. So tickets are still available at solongsummermusicfest.com, or you can visit Extreme Body and Paint or EMS Professionals in Jefferson City. So after that, anyone else have any announcements? Councilman Mahalovich?
I'm working for a record for an hour and two hours for the top eight topics on our agendas, so I do have announcements.
Go for it. Sing it, please.
No, I don't think I can sing it.
Okay.
No, this is a little bit more somber in the sense that we're going to have, maybe it's a celebration, a memorial name unveiling, at Joe Wilson Serenity Point at Noran Access. It's going to occur at 1:00 this Thursday. So see you at the river for a...I think the mayor's going to speak briefly. And Todd, do you have anything to fill in? I appreciate the Parks Recreation and Forestry Department and all their work they've done at the park, North Jefferson.
We're happy to be involved. We miss Joe.
And just by coincidence, a cyclist came through town doing a 10,000-mile biking trip, who two years previous was greeted by our River Angel, Joe Wilson, on that. And he took care of him, as he always did all those river-goers. And she returned with...she was in his council chambers, and she returned with a great deal of pride about Jeff City, and so that continues.
Well, thank you, Councilman Mahalovich, and I will be there on Thursday and look forward to celebrating the memory and also the river. Thank you. Any other announcements? All right. Number nine, presentations from the gallery on specific bills and resolutions. We have nobody signed up this evening. Item 10, consent agenda, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item 11, bills introduced, 2017-70.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri vacating and discontinuing a stormwater easement over a portion of property addressed at 3719 Greystone Drive in the city of Jefferson, Missouri.
Mr. Marash?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As the clerk indicated, this would vacate a stormwater easement. In the past, the property owner was trying to pipe this area, so we accepted an easement on it, and that plan has now changed, and so we're vacating the easement.
Thank you. Any discussion, questions?
2017-71. An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute a $206,563 agreement with the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission for Metropolitan Transportation Planning Services for the period of November 1, 2017, to October 31, 2018, reflecting Consolidated Planning Grant, CPG, funds, as approved in the fiscal year 2018 Unified Planning Work Program.
Mr. Sanders?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The Capital Area Metropolitan Planning Organization Board of Directors finalized their Unified Work Program, which is basically outlining what tasks will be performed in the next fiscal year and the budget associated with those tasks. The bulk of this is for staff time for planners. They have recommended approving this. The fiscal impact, there's a 20% match. It's an 80-20 federal match. The city is responsible for $38,000 of that match, and Cole County will be picking up the remaining almost $13,000. And I'd be glad to answer any questions about this grant application.
Any questions, deliberation? Okay. 2017-72.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri amending the fiscal year 2016-2017 budget of the city of Jefferson, Missouri by supplementally appropriating funds for legal fees for the Missouri American Water Tariff Case before the Missouri Public Service Commission.
Mr. Mollman?
Thank you. This bill would supplementally appropriate $20,000 from the general fund fund balance to legal professional services. The intent is to use these funds to pay for legal fees related to the city's intervention in the Missouri American Water Rate Case pending before the Missouri Public Service Commission.
Any questions? All right. Thank you. Bill's pending. Item 12, we have 2017-66.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri accepting and approving the final subdivision plat of Schrader Subdivision, a subdivision of the city of Jefferson, Missouri.
Mr. Sanders?
Going to be addressing this one?
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This bill would approve the final subdivision plat of Schrader Subdivision. Property is located, shown up on the screen, just east of the intersection of Highway 179 and Industrial Drive and West Main Street. Has frontage on both Industrial and Main Street. The subdivision plat would divide the property, which currently has three buildings on it, into three lots, with each lot containing one building, so dividing the three buildings up so they could be sold independently of each other, roughly along the lines shown up on the screen. Property is owned at M2, which is a general industrial zoning district. And that is a copy of the subdivision plat, which is contained within your packets and is proposed for approval of this council bill. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Barron? Mrs. Powell, roll call, please.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Henry?
Aye.
Hesse?
Aye.
Kemna?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Bill passes. 2017-67.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement with Central Bank of Jefferson City, Missouri for banking services.
Mrs. Miller?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The city issued an RFP that was published in the News Tribune and on our webpage, and also sent to 15 firms. There were two firms that responded with offers, and it's the recommendation of the Evaluation Committee to award the best offer as received from Central Bank. The proposal's for a five-year period, October 1, 2017, through September 30 of 2022. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions, comments? Roll call, please.
Graham?
Aye.
Henry?
Aye.
Hesse?
Aye.
Kemna?
Abstain.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Henry?
Aye.
Hesse?
Aye.
Kemna?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Henry?
Aye.
Hesse?
Aye.
Kemna?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Henry?
Aye.
Hesse?
Aye.
Kemna?
Aye.
Item 20, I will entertain a motion to go into closed session pursuant to Section 610.021 of the Revised Statutes of Missouri. The chair will entertain a motion to go into closed session...
So moved.
...to discuss the following legal actions, Section 610.021.1, and contract negotiations, Section 610.021.12. We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Prather?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Henry?
Aye.
Hesse?
Aye.
Kemna?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Henry?
Aye.
Hesse?
Aye.
Kemna?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?